Hey, good morning, everyone. The time is, where are we at? Nine thirty-two. It's July twenty-ninth. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Erica, if you can do the roll call.
Commissioner Malika.
Commissioner Malika, are you here?
Here, I am here.
Commissioner Hansen.
Here.
Commissioner Pinter.
Here.
Commissioner Odoratio.
Here.
Commissioner Baca.
Here. If everyone can please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move to approve the agenda.
A second.
The motion passes five to zero. So we're on item number four, awards and presentations. So welcome, everyone. We begin today's hearing by publicly honoring the winners of the county's Employee and Team of the Season Awards for the spring twenty-twenty-five season. These employees have all demonstrated outstanding service and dedication to the county and its residents. We will first announce the Team of the Season winner, followed by the Employee of the Season category winners, finished with introducing the overall Employee of the Season winner, and then gathering in front of the podium for a group photo. The winners and their supervisors are here with us and will have a chance to speak after we have read their nominations. So we're going to start off with Commissioner Malika.
All right, we began with our Team of the Season Award, and we're joined this morning by Human Services Director Katie McDougall and the employees from the Family Assessment and Stabilization Team, also known as FAST. Would you please come down to the podium while I announce your award? The Team of the Season Award recognizes project teams and work groups who have successfully collaborated outside their normal routine work duties to accomplish a significant goal that positively impacted the workplace or the Adams County community. Karen nominated this team by writing, "The FAST team exemplifies the values and mission of our agency. FAST was created to serve families when child protection concerns existed, but court intervention was not deemed necessary. Instead of court involvement, FAST provides compassionate, intensive, and consistent support designed to strengthen families and keep children safely at home. Staffed with five experienced caseworkers and dedicated case aid, the team has carefully selected for their ability to connect deeply with families and offer both accountability and encouragement. Their impact speaks for itself. Families served by FAST have described them as angels, the ones who believed in me, the support I needed. At moments when families feel their most vulnerable, the FAST team steps in, not with judgment, but with a commitment to walk alongside them with empathy, respect, and hope. Their dedication, skill, and heart make a lasting difference in the lives of the families they serve."
Katie?
Or anyone in the group? Any words?
Thank you, Commissioners, for recognizing our FAST team. I can't say it any better than what was written in the nomination. I just want to express my gratitude to this team because making a family feel like they are special, making a family know their worth is so important in the work that we do, and I am just grateful for this team and how they show up for families every day. So thank you for the recognition. Does anybody else want to speak? Heather?
Good morning. I just wanted to say, in addition to what's already been said, to be able to work a case without court involvement takes a lot of skill. You have to engage your family without, you know, the hammer over their head. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew that in order to be as successful as they had, they have to have really good engagement skills, and they do a great job.
Thank you so much. The FAST team has received a crystal trophy in honor of their teamwork. A huge thank you to everyone on this team for all of your efforts in supporting our community. And now we will introduce our Employee of the Season category winners.
Good morning. Congratulations to the FAST team, and it is my pleasure to introduce our first category winner today. It is for the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Champion. This award recognizes an individual who seeks opportunities and initiatives that strive to make Adams County an employer of choice by creating an environment where everyone belongs and feels supported, encouraged, and respected. We invite John Nelson, Director of People and Culture Services, to the podium along with Safina Ahmed. David Girion submitted this nomination for Safina. I am honored to nominate Safina, A-Proud's Education Committee Lead. Safina's unwavering dedication to fostering a more inclusive and informed workplace makes her a standout leader in this space. Through her leadership, Safina has continuously found innovative ways to enhance not just the Education Committee, but A-Proud as a whole. Her efforts have helped shape meaningful learning opportunities that drive awareness and action around D E and I principles. Notably, she lent her subject matter expertise to refine Adams County's Unconscious Bias class, ensuring it effectively addresses critical topics with clarity and impact. Beyond this, Safina has dedicated significant time and energy to developing an Impostor Syndrome class, a much-needed resource that was successfully piloted during the March twenty-twenty-five A-Proud meeting. Her ability to recognize gaps in knowledge and create engaging solutions demonstrates her commitment to empowering employees and fostering a culture of belonging. Safina doesn't just talk about change. She actively builds the tools and resources that make it happen. Her passion, creativity, and dedication to education have made a lasting impact. John and Safina, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. Just a few words. So happy to be here to recognize and honor Safina. When I think of Safina, I'm reminded of the Steve Jobs quote, which says, "Because the people who are crazy enough to think they can change the world are the ones who do." Safina is well on her way to changing the world for better. I spoke with her manager, and he wanted me to convey that she has a special ability and willingness to push our team to think differently and consistently rethink how we do things. With a lens towards D E I and innovation, she helps us make better decisions, avoid group think, and the "that's the way it's always been done" mentality. She's not afraid of hard work or hard conversations. In fact, she's co-facilitating a new book club for county employees, and their first book is Radical Candor. She's thoughtful. She genuinely cares about making sure everyone is included and that they feel like they belong here at Adams County. We are so appreciative in the PSC department that we get to benefit from her unique gifts, from her talents that she brings to work every day, working to make work more human, and thank you, Safina.
Thanks for having me this morning. I'm really honored to be recognized in this category specifically. The work of fostering a culture of belonging and respect across our organization and community is deeply personal to me. In times when conversations about identity, belonging, and difference can feel especially difficult or even discouraged, our commitment to empathy, understanding, and open-mindedness becomes even more essential, especially now when the space to be different, to speak openly, or ask for understanding can feel more limited. It becomes even more vital to keep that space open and protected. When we invest in belonging, we're not just shaping a more supportive workplace. We're building the foundation for trust, collaboration, and innovation. This shows up in how people support each other, how they serve our community, how they share ideas, solve problems together, listen with empathy, and serve with care. I'm committed to choosing connection over division and compassion over indifference every day. It's not always easy, but it's work that will pave the way and create the future that we will all live in. I'm grateful to be part of this ongoing effort, and I look forward to building that future together. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations, Safina.
The next award is for the Making It Happen category. This category honors employees who achieve a desired outcome despite facing adversity, such as lack of resources, unexpected challenges, etc. We welcome Jason Schultz, Director of Information Technology and Innovation, to the front along with Abreen Borin Sai. Abreen's nomination comes from Miranda Rose. Abreen is nothing short of a superhero in the ITI department, consistently delivering exceptional customer service with skill, speed, and a smile. No matter how complex or unconventional my requests may be, Abreen approaches every challenge with patience, professionalism, and an almost magical ability to find solutions. His commitment to excellence, even under pressure, is truly inspiring. What sets him apart is not just his technical expertise, but his willingness to go above and beyond, always stepping in. Even when his plate is full, he brings a calm, kind, and positive energy to every interaction, making even the most difficult situations feel manageable. He embodies the spirit of making it happen and is incredibly deserving of this recognition. His dedication, attitude, and superhero-like support make a meaningful difference every day. Thank you, Abreen, for all you do for me and the employees of Adams County. Jason, would you like to begin our remarks?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for taking the time to recognize our employees, Team and Employees of the Seasons, and congratulations to all the other winners and teams. I'm really excited today to get to recognize Arben. I just think this award is so well-deserved. I mean, I think a lot of people have had the opportunity to work with Arben when, as many of y'all know, he oversees our service desk. So there's times when folks are on the phone, and Arben will pick up the phone. He is always kind, patient, thoughtful. He's very, very smart. He's innovative. He's always willing to step in and make it happen, as Miranda said, especially when lack of resources or times, you know, the pressure's on, things are not working. The two most common phrases that I
After we have read their nominations, so we're going to start off with Commissioner Mulca.
All right, we began with our Team of the Season Award and we're joined this morning by Human Services Director Katie McDougall and the employees from the Family Assessment and Stabilization Team, also known as FAST. Would you please come down to the podium while I announce your award? The Team of the Season Award recognizes project teams and work groups who have successfully collaborated outside their normal routine work duties to accomplish a significant goal that positively impacted the workplace or the Adams County community. Karen nominated this team by writing, "The FAST team exemplifies the values and mission of our agency. FAST was created to serve families when child protection concerns existed, but court intervention was not deemed necessary. Instead of court involvement, FAST provides compassionate, intensive, and consistent support designed to strengthen families and keep children safely at home. Staffed with five experienced caseworkers and dedicated case aid, the team has carefully selected for their ability to connect deeply with families and offer both accountability and encouragement. Their impact speaks for itself. Families served by FAST have described them as angels. The ones who believed in me, the support I needed. At moments when families feel their most vulnerable, the FAST team steps in, not with judgment, but with a commitment to walk alongside them with empathy, respect, and hope. Their dedication, skill, and heart make a lasting difference in the lives of the families they serve." Katie, or anyone in the group, any words?
Thank you, Commissioners, for recognizing our FAST team. I can't say it any better than what was written in the nomination. I just want to express my gratitude to this team because making a family feel like they are special, making a family know their worth is so important in the work that we do, and I am just grateful for this team and how they show up for families every day. So, thank you for the recognition. Does anybody else want to speak? Heather?
Good morning. I just wanted to say, in addition to what's already been said, to be able to work a case without court involvement takes a lot of skill. You have to engage your family without, you know, the hammer over their head. So, I just wanted to make sure that you knew that in order to be as successful as they had, they have to have really good engagement skills, and they do a great job.
Thank you so much. The FAST team has received a crystal trophy in honor of their teamwork. A huge thank you to everyone on this team for all of your efforts in supporting our community. And now, we will introduce our Employee of the Season category winners.
Good morning. Congratulations to the FAST team, and it is my pleasure to introduce our first category winner today. It is for the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Champion. This award recognizes an individual who seeks opportunities and initiatives that strive to make Adams County an employer of choice by creating an environment where everyone belongs and feels supported, encouraged, and respected. We invite John Nelson, Director of People and Culture Services, to the podium, along with Safina Ahmed, David Girion. Oh, Safina Ahmed. David Girion submitted this nomination for Safina. I am honored to nominate Safina, A-Proud's Education Committee Lead. Safina's unwavering dedication to fostering a more inclusive and informed workplace makes her a standout leader in this space. Through her leadership, Safina has continuously found innovative ways to enhance not just the Education Committee, but A-Proud as a whole. Her efforts have helped shape meaningful learning opportunities that drive awareness and action around D-E and I principles. Notably, she lent her subject matter expertise to refine Adams County's Unconscious Bias class, ensuring it effectively addresses critical topics with clarity and impact. Beyond this, Safina has dedicated significant time and energy to developing an Imposter Syndrome class, a much-needed resource that was successfully piloted during the March 2025 A-Proud meeting. Her ability to recognize gaps in knowledge and create engaging solutions demonstrates her commitment to empowering employees and fostering a culture of belonging. Safina doesn't just talk about change, she actively builds the tools and resources that make it happen. Her passion, creativity, and dedication to education have made a lasting impact. John and Safina, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. Just a few words. So happy to be here to recognize and honor Safina. When I think of Safina, I'm reminded of the Steve Jobs quote, which says, "Because the people who are crazy enough to think they can change the world are the ones who do." Safina is well on her way to changing the world for better. I spoke with her manager, and he wanted me to convey that she has a special ability and willingness to push our team to think differently and consistently rethink how we do things. With a lens towards DEI and innovation, she helps us make better decisions, avoid group think, and the "that's the way it's always been done" mentality. She's not afraid of hard work or hard conversations. In fact, she's co-facilitating a new book club for county employees, and their first book is Radical Candor. She's thoughtful, she genuinely cares about making sure everyone is included and that they feel like they belong here at Adams County. We are so appreciative in the PSC Department that we get to benefit from her unique gifts, from her talents that she brings to work every day, working to make work more human, and thank you, Safina.
Thanks for having me this morning. I'm really honored to be recognized in this category specifically. The work of fostering a culture of belonging and respect across our organization and community is deeply personal to me. In times when conversations about identity, belonging, and difference can feel especially difficult or even discouraged, our commitment to empathy, understanding, and open-mindedness becomes even more essential, especially now when the space to be different, to speak openly, or ask for understanding can feel more limited. It becomes even more vital to keep that space open and protected. When we invest in belonging, we're not just shaping a more supportive workplace, we're building the foundation for trust, collaboration, and innovation. This shows up in how people support each other, how they serve our community, how they share ideas, solve problems together, listen with empathy, and serve with care. I'm committed to choosing connection over division and compassion over indifference every day. It's not always easy, but it's work that will pave the way and create the future that we will all live in. I'm grateful to be part of this ongoing effort, and I look forward to building that future together. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations, Safina.
The next award is for the Making It Happen category. This category honors employees who achieve a desired outcome despite facing adversity, such as lack of resources, unexpected challenges, et cetera. We welcome Jason Schultz, Director of Information Technology and Innovation, to the front, along with Abreen Borin Sai. Abreen's nomination comes from Miranda Rose. Abreen is nothing short of a superhero in the ITI Department, consistently delivering exceptional customer service with skill, speed, and a smile. No matter how complex or unconventional my requests may be, Abreen approaches every challenge with patience, professionalism, and an almost magical ability to find solutions. His commitment to excellence, even under pressure, is truly inspiring. What sets him apart is not just his technical expertise, but his willingness to go above and beyond, always stepping in, even when his plate is full. He brings a calm, kind, and positive energy to every interaction, making even the most difficult situations feel manageable. He embodies the spirit of making it happen and is incredibly deserving of this recognition. His dedication, attitude, and superhero-like support make a meaningful difference every day. Thank you, Abreen, for all you do for me and the employees of Adams County. Jason, would you like to begin our remarks?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for taking the time to recognize our employees, Team and Employees of the Seasons, and congratulations to all the other winners and teams. I'm really excited today to get to recognize Arben. I just think this award is so well-deserved. I mean, I think a lot of people have had the opportunity to work with Arben when, as many of y'all know, he oversees our service desk. So, there's times when folks are on the phone, and Arben will pick up the phone. He is always kind, patient, thoughtful. He's very, very smart. He's innovative. He is always willing to step in and make it happen, as Miranda said, especially when lack of resources or times or, you know, depression's on, things are not working. The two most common phrases that I hear from Arben, which I love, are, "A, how can I help?", and also, "Whatever you need." And he really goes above and beyond to make it happen, whether it's working with elected officials, staff, seasonal workers. He treats everyone the same and gives them the same professionalism and courtesy and respect, and he always steps in to make it happen. I really feel this award is so well-deserved because it exemplifies his professionalism, and it really speaks to the core of this award to make it happen. So, congratulations, Arben. We look forward to working with you for many more years.
Thank you. Arben, I have to apologize. I said your name wrong. So, Arben, please come up if you have some remarks. We'd love to hear from you, and congratulations.
It's okay, no problem. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everyone. Congratulations to all of them who is being celebrated today. I'm never on the side of the table, or I'm usually helping and facilitating, so pardon me. Just want to thank my wife and family, my wife Rosie, and my big guy, Sonny Ray. We all have special people in our family that keep us motivated, and outside of my immediate family, all of you are my family. You guys help me be successful and be the voice for those who can't speak for themselves throughout the county. More importantly, thank you, Miranda, for nominating me, as well as my team that I help oversee, Julie Curtis, Ace, Jay, Zach, Erica, Keith, and Anthony. I mean, everyone here has run into the help desk at some point. Hopefully, you're getting the help that you need. If not, find me. I'll figure it out. But thank you all, and if you need help, we'll take care of you.
Congratulations, Arben. Thank you.
Outstanding. Everyone's gotten help from Arben at one point or another, right? Our next category is Performance Accelerator, and this category recognizes a nominee who accelerates team and organizational performance by strategic by developing strategic, innovative, and continuous improvement solutions that result in improved outcomes. Please welcome Human Services Director Katie McDougall back to the podium, along with Maggie Merton. Maggie was nominated by Brianna Lopez, who wrote, "Maggie's performance consistently exemplifies initiative, efficiency, and leadership that elevates not only her own work, but performance of the entire team. She routinely arrives early and stays late during times of low coverage, ensuring that client services remain uninterrupted, and her team is fully supported. Her commitment to stepping in when needed demonstrates a deep sense of responsibility and dependability. She even takes the initiative to help out in other areas like the Start Desk without being asked. A proactive learner, Maggie will pilot new processes and collaborate with other departments to bounce ideas around for what is best for the county. Maggie truly embodies what is meant to be a performance accelerator by enhancing workflows, empowering her team, and uplifting the community she serves." All right, Katie, it's all yours.
Thank you, Commissioners, for recognizing Maggie this morning. She is truly the go-to person for her team, always willing to help, knows our resources that are available for our community, really truly expert in that, and making sure that people are connected so that they can be as well and as healthy as they can be. So, super proud of Maggie for receiving this recognition. So, anybody want to say any words?
We're very shy, so. I just want to thank my parents who are watching online for, you know, instilling me in the to always show up 10 minutes early and just the work ethic. And then, my husband and my daughter, who can't be here, she's too young for this. It just, you know, for those days where I do stay late, my husband's saying, "No, it's fine, it's fine. You do what the team needs." And then, just for my team that it's not, I know my supervisor has said, you know, I'm the, you know, person to go to, but we always we're just a team of six, and we just bump ideas off all the time. And also, I want to thank my previous supervisor, Rita, who is also in attendance, still giving me support even after I left the team, and also Rachel is also an audience, and she's the Start Here Desk Supervisor, and she's always been the person that if there's not a supervisor, she's there to help me go through. So, there's so many people in Adams County that have shaped me to where I can do this job, and I just want to thank them for believing in me.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Baca.
Okay, the next award is the Success in Practice category. It honors individuals who play an integral role in a successful intervention, problem resolution, and improvement with a customer, resident, or process of Adams County. So, we invite Katie McDougall back to the podium from Human Services, back up with Cheyenne Alphin, who was nominated by Farren Williams. So, Cheyenne demonstrates what true success in practice looks like through her unwavering kindness, dedication, and client-centered approach. She serves our clients with a level of passion and empathy that stands out, ensuring each individual feels heard, supported, and empowered. Beyond her day-to-day responsibilities, Cheyenne has proactively committed herself to learning new programs and systems that enhance client access to vital benefits and services. Her continuous growth and practical application of knowledge directly contribute to improved outcomes for our clients and the overall effectiveness of our work in economic mobility. Cheyenne is a model of excellence in action and truly deserving of this recognition. So, Katie and Cheyenne, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Commissioners, for recognizing Cheyenne this morning. Again, the nomination really sums up her great work. I just want to add, that's not easy work. So, that makes it sound easy, but knowing and being knowledgeable across all of those programs takes years of training and dedication and a lot of work, and so to do that and navigate that while being so such a good team member and such a good person to our community is really special. So, if you want to say a few words?
I'm honored to receive this award, and I just want to say thank you to all my team members and my supervisor who have supported me along the way. So, thank you.
Congratulations, Cheyenne, and thank you for all your hard work. All right, next we present the Unsung Hero category, which honors individuals for providing high-quality, reliable, and critical work that if not completed, would compromise operations. This person functions behind the scenes, is willing to improve work situations, and does so without fanfare or being prompted. Come back up, Katie McDougall. This is like your whole day. Just stay. I'm glad you're staying close. Along with Joyce Rodriguez, come on down. Farren Williams and Cheyenne Alphin nominated Joyce by writing, "In the demanding field of human services and economic mobility, Joyce leads with compassion, patience, and unwavering dedication, never seeking recognition yet consistently makes a profound impact. Whether supporting clients or colleagues, she goes above and beyond without hesitation, driven solely by a desire to do what's right. She works tirelessly behind the scenes to ensure clients receive the public assistance and benefits they need, often stepping in unprompted to resolve challenges with empathy and understanding. Every case Joyce handles reflects her commitment to serving others with care and precision. Joyce's quiet strength and steadfast dedication makes her truly deserving of this recognition." Katie?
Commissioners, thank you for recognizing Joyce this morning. Again, the nomination does sum up all of the hard work so well. What's not mentioned is that she also likes to jump in and do special projects with our team, often volunteering to do even more. And she's a proud mom of four boys, so really also not just busy at work, but busy at home. And certainly, again, thank you for recognizing Joyce.
Good morning. Thank you for this recognition. I appreciate it. I just want to thank my team and my supervisor for supporting me along the way, and my family, my husband and my kids.
Congratulations, Joyce.
All right, next up, we present the Extra Effort category, which honors individuals who provide a unique level of service that fosters good business relationships and enhances a positive reputation. Please welcome Katie McDougall back again to the podium, where she never left, along with Adriana Casiba. Elisa Mangian, Mangion, excuse me, nominated Adriana with this nomination. Adriana is committed to the children and families she works with. She was assigned a case in January but was struggling to connect with the family. We had received numerous reports of concern for the children in the home, but no one was responding to outreach. For four months, Adriana continued to try to track down the family. She went to their last known address at least once a week. She tried any addresses she could find that had ever been associated with them. She asked the after-hours team to try the home at night. She called every phone number she had for them. She sent emails. She reached out on Facebook. She searched court records. She contacted the schools the children were supposed to be attending, and she reached out to family members. After all her hard work, it was determined that the family was still living at the original address, but was avoiding the department. Through a court case, we were able to get a search warrant, which police executed in mid-April with Adriana present. The conditions of the home were extremely poor. There was no electricity, the children hadn't been in school since October, and more. Adriana arranged for the kids to go to a safe place with a relative after making sure a child with an injury was seen medically. If it was not for Adriana's perseverance, extra effort, and never-give-up attitude, who knows how much worse things would have gotten for these children? Now, the family is getting the support and services they need. Adriana is more than just the winner of this category. She has also been chosen as the Overall Spring Employee of the Season. As such, she is receiving $350 in Culture and Action Points and a trophy in addition to this Certificate of Recognition. Katie and Adriana, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Commissioners, for recognizing Adriana. I don't know a better example of persistence as you read that nomination, and really sticking through to make sure that children are safe and well-cared-for is really, Adriana sets the bar high for us to do our work well. She not only cares for family, she cares for her team. So, when everybody needs some help, she's the first one to jump in with a helping hand and certainly support them through a tough day at work when those occur. So, thank you for taking the time. Elisa, did you want to say a few words to?
Thank you for recognizing Adriana. I don't have a lot to add as I submitted the nomination, but I just want to say that we are so lucky as a team and as a county to have Adriana with us. She, her dedication to the families that we work with is second to none, and I appreciate her more than she'll know.
I just want to thank Elisa and the team for always supporting me and encouraging me to keep going. It's an honor to receive this award. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations, Adriana.
Thank you to everyone who made nominations, and for everyone who evaluated, and for everyone who is here today to receive a recognition. You all have done so much for our organization. We get to hear these stories and get a little glimpse into the work that you do. We know about it from reports or from interacting with you or from your department heads and leads, but to hear these little stories that represent so much hard work and so much dedication to good public service to the residents and to your teammates is really special, and I look forward to hearing these stories and learning more about your work every time we get to do one of these Employee of the Seasons. Our Employee of the Season category winners, you all win 5,000 Culture and Action Points and a Certificate of Recognition. To all our winners, thank you for your service to the Adams County community. We would also like to thank all employees for joining us today in person, and those of you watching on the livestream or on YouTube channel in support of your colleagues or in support of your family. We also encourage you to nominate your deserving coworkers. The Summer Employee and Team of the Season nominations open on August 4th, so next week. Please visit my Adams for more information and how you can nominate deserving coworkers and teams. We would now like to take a group photo with the team and employee winners, so please join us down in front right here. We're going to be looking up towards the podium. To all Employee of the Season winners, please meet with our photographer, Wes, outside the public hearing room immediately following for a group photo to get your individual photos taken. So, we'll look forward to joining you all down here in the front.
Okay, well, that was an exciting morning to honor our employees. So, now we're on to Public Comment. Erica, do you have anyone sign up for Public Comment?
We do not.
Okay, is there anyone in the room that didn't sign up for Public Comment that would like to come down and to the podium? Looks like all employees are on to.
Hey Chair, could we close the doors just so that everyone can celebrate in the hallway while they get their photos? We can have a little quiet? Thank you. I mean, they deserve to celebrate.
They deserve to celebrate.
They do celebrate, but we have a door.
All right, so we're on to Elected Official Communications. Anything from the Board?
If no one else is going to say it, the fair.
Yes.
When is, Commissioner Mulca, when is the fair?
The fair starts Wednesday all the way through Sunday. There's so many events. I can't even name them all off the top of my head, but please join us. It's going to be so much fun. We're even talking about all the events we're going to go to. And so, exciting stuff happening this week. I'm looking forward to all of it, to be honest with you. Can't wait.
It's a lot of fun.
Yes. Commissioner Henson, then Pinter.
Oh, we'll go this way. All right. Just to tag on, I know that folks are already at the fair. Staff are working. The 4-H kids are out there with their animals, showing them, and it's an event that goes on all week. We have the largest local fair in the state of Colorado. It provides a lot of enjoyment. My favorite is the Kids' Day. The Kids' Day is just fantastic, and if you want to come on out, I just want to pull up the numbers. It is, but it starts at 10:00 a.m. It's going to be all around the area around the Waymeyer Dome. It's going to have Free Resource Fair, Bounce Houses, Waterworld Kid Zone, Petting Zoo, free games, performances from Paz the Sports Guide, racing pigs, extreme dogs, and more. So, come on and join us. The wristbands are going to be available until 3:00 p.m. If you want to buy a carnival wristband, but all the activities are free. My kids have always enjoyed the top dogs and extreme dogs and all the My kids have always enjoyed the top dogs and extreme dogs and all the like trained animals. So, I hope you all can join us Friday at the fair or whatever day works for you.
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to share, share a fun, what I think is kind of a fun story. I was fortunate enough to travel to the city of Seattle last week with my family. And we had been there a couple of years ago and there'd been a lot of construction down on the waterfront. And fast forward to three years later, we were there last week for the grand opening of a major public space on their new waterfront park. And so, I was taking a lot of pictures all week of the, how they've, how the city has transformed that space. So, even on vacation, it's hard to get away from the excitement of pub, local government, what local government can accomplish. And I really enjoyed seeing the transformation in that city. And I shared some of those photos with my colleagues and it inspired me with some ideas that hopefully we'll be able to bring to, into our work here in Adams County. So, I was, thank you for the time away and I want to say thank you in advance to our staff and all the volunteers at the fair this weekend because it's going to be a lot of work, but it's so appreciated. It's going to be a wonderful event for our community. And lastly, that I just love these days of employees of the, of the quarter, of the season. So, it's very inspiring to, to work in a county with such dedicated employees and who have so much respect for each other and not write these wonderful nominations that even department heads and Commissioners can't, can't, can't add on and add anything to because it's so, they're so eloquently stated. So, thanks, everybody, for your hard work.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. I'd just like to add, so Adams County Fair, the other thing is over the weekend, I don't usually do an around-town update. We're really busy and we're all out and about. I did attend a local bazaar. It was the Assumption Catholic Church Bazaar. It's a longstanding tradition for that particular institution, over 100 years, I think. This should may have been 120 years. So, the reason I bring this up is that people traveling to either the school, the church or the bazaar, the most frequented street is York Street. And York Street has been under construction for years and I want to say the upwards of three years, maybe longer. And it is so beautiful. It, I just want to thank staff, the administration, staff, all of the people in Public Works that worked on that. It was a lot of blood, sweat and tears. I mean, that project went on between right-of-way, between handling some things underground, right-of-way acquisition. But what a facelift for that entire community and such pride. I mean, you see all of this, there's some residential streets along York, or residential houses along York Street and they all have curb and sidewalk gutters. They have driveway entrances and it's just been, it's, it's beautiful. There's huge sidewalks to connect to a trail system. So, thank you so much to the team and for uplifting that community. It's been a long time coming. My family grew up there. Commissioner Odericio has family in the area as well. So, it has been a really long time. From dirt shoulders to see a complete street, what we call a complete street with, you know, sidewalks on each end is just really fantastic. So, looking forward to celebrating with staff on that accomplishment. Anything else, Commissioner Odericio?
I appreciate that you brought that up. I would also encourage people to go check out those streets that our Public Works Department have been working really hard on, including 58th Avenue as well. You know, a lot of folks in the community like to complain when those, that construction's going on, but it's also more important also to celebrate when we're done with those things and go recognize that we are now connecting people that are on bikes and walking and with strollers and with other special challenges that they may have with mobility as well as making it easier for the car commuter. The whole complete street notion is something that we're going to continue to work on and make us more of a pedestrian and neighborhood-friendly community. So, I appreciate that you bring that up. York Street is gorgeous and go check out 58th and there's, there's always more stuff coming and you'll continue to see that. So, I will also point out that Pecos, South Pecos is pretty phenomenal. And I really enjoyed driving that the other day and looking at the medians. And so, we're really trying to raise the bar all throughout Adams County, working with our cities, but also in the incorporated areas. So, thank you. And thank you to this Commission for continuing to work on that across the board.
Yes. All right, so we're on to the Consent Calendar, item number six.
Let's go ahead and make a motion, move to approve the Consent Calendar as presented.
I'll second.
And the Consent Calendar passes five to zero. So, we're on to new business. We have County Manager up first.
No new business today, Commissioners.
Great, thank you. County Attorney?
Same, no new business.
Okay, nothing under executive sessions. So, item number nine is land use. Does staff need any time to set up?
No.
Okay, we're ready when you are.
Okay, good morning. My name is David Duboski and I'm here to present to GCSA Event Center Conditional Use Permit Full Bar, RCU 2023-1. And, and, got to turn it on. And, so, the request is a conditional use permit for an event center and staff is going to recommend a continuance of RCU 2023-1, the GCSA Event Center Conditional Use Permit Full Barn to the December 9th, 2025 B OCC Hearing at 9:30 a.m. I thank you. I'm available for questions.
Questions from the Board. Commissioner Henson?
Can you just please give some context as to what the continuance is for?
Yeah.
If they think, if you think a resolute, will come to a positive resolution or will the project actually move forward at that time?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't get that explanation. So, at the Planning Commission, the applicants needed more time to complete the resolving issues. And so, this was a deadline that was generated both by the Planning Commission and the applicants.
Is the applicant, are they, so they, were they previously also not prepared for the Planning Commission meeting or what? I'm just looking for some background here.
Yeah, so they, they were, yeah, I'll let Jen talk about it.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jen Rutter, Planning and Development Manager. Staff has been working with the applicant on their application for a number of years, the cases from 2023, as you can see. Staff had been recommending denial and Planning Commission decided to work with the applicant to see if they can come to a place where we could recommend approval. So, the applicant was hoping to have more time to work on a few items and Planning Commission was willing to grant them that additional time. So, Planning Commission will be hearing the case in November and therefore this date would be the one that works for the Commissioners.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Great, thank you. Any additional questions from staff? Is there anyone in the audience that is here for this land use hearing? I see employees. So, with that, just a motion from the Board to continue this item.
I would make a motion to continue item RCU 2023-1 until the date of December 9th, 2025 at our Board of Commissioner, Board of County Commissioners Hearing at 9:30 a.m.
I'll second. And that motion passes five to zero. So, we'll hear that case in December. With no additional items on our agenda this morning, we are adjourned at 10:12 a.m.